The Upper County Commission is in order. We'll have a moment of silent meditation followed by a pledge of allegiance and the reading of approval for a minute.
(inaudible)
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 First, I'll read the May 19th special meeting minutes. The County Commission to Upper County West Virginia held a special meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, May 19, 2016 at 4:00 p.m. Terry Cutright called meeting door to President, where Terry Cutright Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Terry Wallace County Administrator, Terry Assistant County Administrator, Jacqueline McLaughlin Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. Carol Smith and Carolyn Mary appeared before the commission, joined by Debbie Becker, Will Vaughn, via telephone conference call, representing the Office of the Upper County Clerk's last elections, to discuss results of the May 10 primary election. Ms. Smith reviewed recount procedures for a contested election. A recount of votes has been requested by Anita Adams to secure 2,900 set votes. Kay Hurst received 3,247 votes. After discussion by general consent, it was agreed to begin recount for the election contest of magistrate slash division two on Tuesday, May 31 at 9:00 a.m. The Office of County Clerk will follow up with sending notices, collecting required fees, and preparing for the recount. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the certification of the local election results with the exception of the contest of magistrate slash division two between Kay Hurst and Anita Adams. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign correspondence to Tommy O'Leary, West Virginia Development Office, Community Development Representative, which approves the drawdown request in the amount of $395,706.55 for the Adrian Public Service District Phase Six Water Extension, Small Cities Block Grant Project Number 10 S C B G 0035. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission meeting recessed at 4:35 p.m. The commission will reconvene at 4:00 p.m. on Monday, May 23, 2016, for certification of state election results. And then there is a note on the bottom that says, um, that was done on, uh, 2016. Per instructions from the Office of the Secretary of State due to late recording by some counties, state election results cannot be certified until after Tuesday, May 24 at 1:30 70 a.m. Terry Wallace followed up with the commissioners to convey this information. By general consent, commissioners approved to adjourn until 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, May 26, 2016. For the regular meeting of the Upper County Commission, certification of state election results will be placed on the May 26 meeting agenda. Do you want to wait until everybody thinks approval?
(inaudible)
Um, Upper County Commission meeting, May 26, 2016. The County Commission of Upper County, West Virginia, held a regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, May 26, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. Terry Cutright called meeting door to President, where Terry Cutright Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Terry Wallace County Administrator, Terry Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline McLaughlin Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 12, 2016, as admitted. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the certification of the state election results. Local results were certified on Thursday, May 19 with the exception of the contest of magistrate slash division two between Kay Hurst and Anita Adams during a special meeting of the Upper County Commission. A recount of that contest will begin on May 31, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. John Hayman, Tannerton Lions Club President, appeared before the commission with other Lions Club members and reviewed their offer to provide help in hands to renovate playground facilities of the at the Buchanan Upper Recreation Park. Mr. Hayman cited a few areas which could use some enhancement, including painting benches and playground equipment, applying safety mulch, and graveling of the roadway. The Tannerton Lions Club would provide labor if the county commission will supply the materials. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission accepted the offer from the Tannerton Lions Club to provide manpower for playground renovations. Terry Wallace advised Mr. Hayman that he will need to provide insurance documents prior to beginning work and coordinate with Ray Harris, Director of Facilities Operations, to determine and order needed materials. Mr. Hayman and Lions Club members are hopeful that they will be able to complete their work prior to the July 4th holiday. Commissioners expressed appreciation to club members for their volunteerism and community spirit. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the West Virginia Board of Pharmacy Application for the Louisville Suburban Control Facility for permit renewal to handle controlled substances for the period from July 1, 2016 through 2017. Agenda item number three, purchase agreement for chemicals to service, is not ready for action at this time and will be placed on a future agenda. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the signing of correspondence to Paul Chapman, Upper County Resident, concerning required action on Upper County Safe Sides and structures ordinance in Department of Court case number 091114-01, and to inform him of a June 30, 2016 deadline for compliance. The commission urged Mr. Chapman to take corrective action and provide a good notification of the potential consequences slash realities of non-con compliance. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the oath and certification for the real estate land books and personal property books for texture 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the expenditure of $175 payable to Skate Land for rent rental on July 19 as requested by James W. Curry, Public Library Director, Judith L. Williams. The Skate Land event is for the grand finale of the On Your Mark Get Set Read and Get in the Game Summer Reading Program for participants who have completed their reading logs. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the expenditure of $179.40 payable to Mark Coffindapper for Speaker slash Instructor Creed, as requested by James W. Curry, Public Library Director, Judith Williams, as part of the Get in the Game Summer Reading Program. Commissioners expressed appreciation of Ms. Williams' efforts to instill in young people the values of reading. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the advertisement for the opening of the Upper County Pool on May 28, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the employment of additional staff members for the Buchanan Recreation Park Pool as follows: lifeguards Kimberly Culver, Benjamin Homer, Michael McCoy, lifeguard's pending certification Julia Reed, Kay Garrett, Darian Howell, Cody Taylor, Tyler Powell, Benjamin Homer, Abigail, I think Benjamin Homer's on there, twice started. Abigail Culver, admissions, Riley Lamb, Samantha Gregory, and Carolyn Costner. Date of employment is effective on or about May 30, 2016 at the rate of $8.75 per hour for all. The commission also approved the changes status of employment of Samantha Barlow from admissions to lifeguard pending certification. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Courtney Miller and McKenna DeBosser as seasonal coaches for the splashes. Their employment is effective immediately and the cost of pay will be reimbursed with county info by the splashes. The rate of pay for Ms. Miller is $2,000 for the season and is filed with $1,300 for the season. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the resignation of Melanie Edmonds as Community Corrections Case Manager, Chairman and V I P P Facilitator, effective May 20, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Janet Report as full-time case manager for the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections Day in the Port Center Lewis County Office, effective June 6, 2016, at the rate of $11 per hour. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Samantha Rivera Magito as full-time case manager for the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections Day in the Port Center Lewis County Office, effective June 6, 2016, at the rate of $11 per hour. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved resignation of Crystal Gibson as monitor with the Tri-City Child Exchange Invisitation Program, effective April 20, 2016, as recommended by that program coordinator. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Bethany Jane Burkhardt as site supervisor for the Tri-City Child Exchange Invisitation Program, effective immediately upon background clearance at the rate of $9.50 per hour, as recommended by that program coordinator. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved resignation of Cecilia Stewart, E9111 Communications Center Supervisor, effective May 16, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved resignation of Arlene Harper, S T X W, effective May 20, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the reappointment of Joyce Harris Banker as board member of the Upper County Solid Waste Authority. Ms. Harris Banker's four-year term will expire on June 30, 2020. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the W B Corp, the West Virginia Association of County Support Pool South Insurance Renewal Package consisting of one, cover sheet to member agreement, two, uninsured mother's coverage offer, and three, underinsured mother's coverage offer. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the installation of a Little Tree Library at the County Health Department's site, as requested by Maloney Stempel, Secretary slash Treasurer of the County. The library has been sponsored by Mrs. Kay Yilick, who will be responsible to keep books supplied from this location. Steve Butler, Upper County Foreland Protection Board Chairman and Administrator of the West Virginia Forest Bureau, appeared to confirm the patient, and requested approval of amendments to the Upper County Foreland Protection Board Program handbook. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the amendments to the handbook as requested. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the reappointment of Edwin Beer, as member of the Upper County State Sites and Structures Ordinance Enforcement Board, effective through June 30, 2018. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the reappointment of James Farrell, as member of the Upper County State Sites and Structures Ordinance Enforcement Board, effective through June 30, 2018. Terry Cutright reviewed the following four year resignation items: number one, memorandum from Joshua Wolf, Justice Programs Monitor with the Division of Justice and Community Services, advising that a member of the Division of Justice and Community Services staff will be conducting an onsite visit on June 6, 2016 at 1:00 p.m. concerning grant 14 V I W dash zero two one. Two, memorandum from Joshua Wolf, Justice Programs Monitor with the Division of Justice and Community Services, advising that a member of the Division of Justice and Community Services staff will be conducting an onsite visit on June 6, 2016 at 2:30 p.m. concerning grant 14 dash eight dash zero three three. Three, reminder of deadlines for submitting budget revisions from Aura Ash Deputy State Auditor. Four, correspondence from Charles McKinney, Assistant Chief Inspector, Chief Inspector Division of the Office of State Auditor, enclosing a copy of the report on applying agreed upon procedures of the Upper County magistrate court for the period ending December 31, 2015. Report is available for public review in the Office of the Upper County Commission. Five, United States of America Federal N T Regulatory Commission. Supplemental notice have been tagged to prepare an environmental impact statement and proposed land and resources and way amendments for the proposed Atlantic Coast Pipeline. Request for comments on environmental issues related to the new route and facilities modifications, and notice of public covered meetings. Six, adoption of financial transactions, April 2016. Seven, doc report, April 2016. Eight, cat report, April 2016. Nine, attendance and notice of meeting is listed. Ten, meeting minutes as listed. Eleven, meetings as listed. Twelve, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission recessed at 9:40 a.m. The commission reconvened at 10 a.m. James Perry, C E R T, Community Emergency Response King's Representative, and former O E M Office of Emergency Management Director, appeared before the commission to discuss county budget-related spending authorization procedures. Mr. Perry expressed disapproval of the new procedures to authorize certain spending. Mr. Perry advised that previously certain was allocated a specific amount of funding and give the free rein to spend as be necessary and appropriate by the Board of Directors. Under the new directive, which was created during March budget meetings, it is his understanding that the cert board members must obtain approval from the commission for certain expenditures. Mr. Perry also conveyed that this was the first he had heard of the new policy and expressed concerns about lack of communication. Mr. Perry further discussed dissatisfaction with the proposed agreement between the Upper County Commission and certain as training courses instructors for the expenditure of certain funds under the fiduciary care of the Office of Emergency Management, which specifies that a trained class must consist of not less than six students with a compensation of between $140 and $170. Mr. Perry stated that the class sizes could be unpredictable due to factors, and the goal is to conduct class and to get people trained no matter how many people are in attendance. It was suggested that a commissioner should attend the meeting between O E M and CERT to come to an agreement to determine suitable class size and compensation. This idea was rejected, but commissioners expressed that they did not feel that it is appropriate or necessary for the commissioners to be involved with the creation of an agreement for the CERT training. Several CERT members expressed concerns about being micromanaged and not being able to get volunteers because of being overregulated. After discussion, J.C. Rafferty made a motion to defer action on the policy and stated that written words do not necessarily convey intent. The motion was not seconded, and Commissioner Brady expressed that there has to be a policy. J.C. Rafferty advised that CERT members and O E M personnel should get together and come to an agreement. Terry Wallace, Sir, can Terry consider and ask observer? After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission agreed to defer action on the policy for further consideration. The commission discussed E9111 Communications Center Mobile Device Policy, E9111. E9111 personnel requested and accepted to the policy and stated that an online course that she is taking has relevance to her job and training, and she wishes to bring her laptop for study during slow or inactive periods during work time. Terry Wallace questioned how usage of the laptop would be monitored slash limited. Commissioners expressed concern about jeopardizing the safety of citizens, setting a precedent slash employees taking advantage, not of benefit to all, only for personal gain, and questioned relevance to job abilities and/or performance. After discussion, no action was taken to allow the employee to use her personal laptop. Terry Wallace proposed that possibly accommodation might be made by using a retired county-owned computer and install needed software for access to her class, which would also allow county officials the ability to monitor appropriate usage. Ms. Wallace will look into this option. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following disonerations and/or refunds as listed. The commission recessed at 11 a.m. The commission attended meetings of the Upper County Department Supervisors and the Upper County Policy Board. The commission reconvened at 2:45 p.m. With now for the business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission adjourned at 4:45.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
You've worked through three minutes of our 19th, 2016 minute meeting and our May 26th, 2016 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
(inaudible)
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 Mr. Perry, the draft minutes of what you're saying as well. Do you have a copy of that?
(inaudible)
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 Associates Incorporated, and advertisement of the project. This manual includes an invitation for bids to the repair of the courthouse roof that will be funded by the grant award made by the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority. There will be a mandatory pre-bid conference at 3:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 16, 2016. All sealed bids must be received no later than 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, June 30, 2016. Sealed bids will be opened, reviewed, and read aloud by the Upper County Commission at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, June 30, 2016. Carrie, are you conducting that pre-bid, or is WYK?
WYK, we got a representative thing of a WYK, will handle the pre-bid conference.
Okay, you know where that's going to be?
Yeah.
Here? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all papers signed by the saying aye, 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 so. Five, approval and signature of letter to artisan process chemical group canceling water treatment services effective July 1, 2016. If I understand right, they haven't been here for two or three months, have they?
That's right.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded, all papers signed by the saying aye, 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 so. Five, approval and signature of purchase agreement for chemicals and services buying between Industrial Water Resources Incorporated, for instance, IWR, and the Upper County Commission in the monthly sum of $225 effective July 1, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we approve, all papers signed by the saying aye, 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 so.
Should be knowing that we're getting the same service.
For us money, yeah, a lot of stuff like that, but you move too quick.
And it's a local vendor, too, that makes it nice.
All right, now moving on, we have a 9:30 appointment with Lori Aldridge, Upper County Family Resource Network Director.
Do you need your ass to water?
I got, she got that. Do you want me to?
She's going to be reading, I guess.
I'll try not to take up too much time, I have something to do reading.
You're not going to wait for your cop, you know.
That's why, if you notice, there's a Kleenex in my, I might have to bring something that's really bright and shiny. Actually, Elder Abuse Month is June, but the World Elder Abuse Day is actually 15th. So what we're going to do, we brought some purple pens for you all to wear, but I brought an example of what Camp Buckin Air Kits are going to help us make, which we're going to give each one of you five, one of these as well. What we're going to do on the 15th is the F R is going to go to the assisted living facilities, nursing homes, et cetera, and sit down, speak to people, and bring these to them. I think we may have parts, too. So what I want you to do with yours is to give to somebody you know that may be shut-in, an older person, a relative or something, to make their day as well. So that's what we're going to hopefully rope the kids in and get those finished.
I'm getting the day down, I'll find out for me.
Well, you want to keep it yourself.
A little help, Terry.
I wasn't going to say it, but you keep it yourself. What I'm going to do is read the Do You Really See Me verse before I get the proclamation. If Jenny can attest to this, and my husband can attest to this, I don't like reading what things that I've written, but I went ahead and I tried to wrap my head around how I had to explain what elder abuse is, and this is the best way that I could figure it out. It's really called Do You Really See Me, so I couldn't find none if I had to. I don't see as well through these watering eyes as I did when I was young, but did you know I was a sharpshooter in the war? Fifty years ago, before I had to have glasses and cataract surgery, the government gave me a medal and put four bars on my chest for saving my platoon. The uncondensed perspective me, but that's all changed. My children abandoned me in this home in the worst town. I think they sold the medal, one of my cherished possessions, and all my stuff is gone now, sold for their drug addictions. My children never visit because my kids are in jail and my precious grandkids are in foster care. This place doesn't treat me very well, but how do I get out of here? I once could navigate the jungle, but now I can't find my way home. My body is stooped over, I'm wrinkled, I shuffle when I walk. Although my full lips and wavy hair have changed, I was once a beauty queen. I confidently stood on that stage, chosen above the others, took my beautiful blonde hair, green crown, and yellow roses placed in my arms. I rode in parades and went to elementary schools to speak to those children. I couldn't believe that they thought I was beautiful. Now that beauty has faded, but why does this lady who sits with me all night call me ugly names when I don't move fast enough to hear what she says sometimes? I'm older, but when did I become so ugly? This woman says if I tell anyone about the things she's done to me, she'll hurt me. So I stay silent and try not to flinch when she calls me worthless and stupid. These arthritic gnarled hands built this house where I raised a family and planted the garden that fed us. I could raise a garden with enough left over to sell. That money kept the kid, I got the wrong one, but I got a lower revision of it. That money kept the shoes on kids' feet. Back then, people were disappointed when they didn't make it to my house in time and get the last of my potatoes. If I had those potatoes to the fair, they would win first prize, or at least that's what the neighbors said. I just don't understand why my daughter unless she stays in my room all day, the room I shared with the love of my life for 66 years. My daughter's family uses the rest of the house but never includes me. I'm shut up and not allowed out, and they act like I'm useless. She brings me food, but something like a TV dinner when I'm lucky. I could still be out there working in the dirt, maybe planting a hill of potatoes or two, but I have to stay in and look at the dirt in my room. I don't like this type of dirt. Smartest attack, straight A's, and skipped the third grade. Valedictorian and went on to college, but his mind gave out before his body. Dementia took over his once brilliant mind. His loving children and paying caregiver, his loving children are paying caregivers to care for them since they live so many states away. They paid a great deal to keep their father comfortable in his own home rather than a facility he didn't recognize. So now there's a living caretaker. They never see how this caretaker smacks their father when he drops a spoon, or kicks him when he doesn't make it to the bathroom on time. Their father can't tell them what's going on because after it happens, the pain washes away in his mind like a passing plow. When the children are able to come visit, they may see a bruise here or there, but the caretaker says he falls a lot and bruises easily, but he does his best, the caretaker does his best to make sure that doesn't happen. The children give the caretaker a bonus because he's so good to their father when they can't be there for him. Miraculously, a Jewish girl made it through the terrors and inhumaneness of the camps. She was able to move across the ocean and start again with her mother and brother. They had nothing much to eat or enough heat at times, but they had one another. The longer they stayed in America, the better life became. Her mother told her to go for her dreams, so she worked her way through law school and was a well-respected attorney in New York City. Her mother passed long ago, and her brother passed last year. She stays alone in assisted living apartments with other residents. Since her stroke, her speech isn't good, and she can't get anyone to understand or know how hard she tries. She wants to tell them that her burly neighbor speaks over and kisses her when she'd rather scream no. He does what he wants, but he never leaves a mark, so no one knows her shame. It's like the shame of the camps all over again. We stop and think of all these stories, these seniors, a soldier, a beauty queen, a farmer, a professor, and a lawyer, would all be very well-respected individuals in our community. They should be, they should still be respected, not only for who they were, but for who they are now. No senior citizen deserves to be bullied, kicked, cussed, stolen from, neglected, or sexually abused, yet it still continues. Sometimes the abuse is from a failing member, other times it's a neighbor, neighbor, but above all, it happens a great deal in homes and assisted living facilities. I ask each and every one of you to look for the signs and symptoms of elder abuse, and especially pay attention to those who cannot speak for themselves. Treasure the seniors in your life. One day they will no longer be there. Their wisdom, experience, and way of life will disappear slowly as each person passes away. It's also my hope that each senior citizen is treated with love, kindness, and respect. So take that extra moment and stop by to visit the shut-in neighbor, break a few leaves, or just sit and talk. It'll make all the difference in the world to that person, and it'll make a difference in you, too.
Do you have a proclamation?
Yes, I do. And it's much shorter than that.
Very nice. That was very nice.
Thank you.
I'm a debit.
World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Whereas the United Nations has designated June 15, 2016, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, to focus global attention on the problem of physical, emotional, and financial abuse of elders. And whereas research has shown that elder abuse, neglect, violence, and exploitation, exploitation, I can't talk today, crosses all social, economic, racial, and ethnic boundaries, is often committed by someone who provides care for the elderly person, is one of the biggest issues facing senior citizens around the world. And whereas World Health Organization data suggests that four to six percent of elderly people suffer from some sort of abuse, a large percentage of which goes unreported. Whereas combating abuse of senior citizens and vulnerable adults will help older Americans to continue to live as independently as possible, improve their quality of life, and allow them to continue to contribute to the life and vibrancy of their community. And whereas, as a community, we should seek to understand the challenges and opportunities presented by an aging population, and bring together senior citizens and their caregivers, local government, the medical community, social service, and other agencies, and the private sectors, to exchange ideas, how best to reduce the incidence of violence towards elders, and increase reporting of such abuse. Now, therefore, the Upper County Commission do hereby proclaim June 2016 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to acknowledge the significance of elder abuse as public health and human rights issues, to learn how to report abuse, and to raise awareness and take a stand against elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation.
Thank you. I would like to say, we do need to be aware of this, and it does go there, but there's a lot of really good help here about it.
There are.
I had several of them working with my dad when he was, when he was home. And there's angels, they were angels.
There's a lot of good ones, but we still have to look after those other ones. Like I said, we've got the pens, we could take a picture, get that everywhere, too. Take my little article.
You know, we had a similar situation with someone, they were my mother, she lived with us, and it is a blessing to have good people in those positions. Yeah. My daughter works for the Department of Health and Resources for the state, and part of the functions of that organization she's part of is to protect elder abuse in nursing homes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all papers signed by the saying aye, 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 so. Our next scheduled appointment's at 9:45. I'll be on your, some of the social stuff. Thank you. What was it? You was on number four?
Five.
Six.
Number six is what the next one is.
Approval, signature, and memorandum of understanding between Mountain Capital West Virginia Incorporated, C D C, and the Upper County Recreation Parks, effective May 2016 through July 2016. This memorandum sets forth the rights and responsibilities of each department insofar as they relate to the planning and operation of the summer food service program. This agreement is, we're going to use the pool area, table area, and I guess every day they bring lunches in, and David called yesterday and got a report from, she says average about 25 children or needy people a day, due to some of the, to pick up those lunches. I think it's a great program. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all papers signed by the saying aye, 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 so. Seven, approval and signature of 50 both state and local fair market value lease for a term of 60 months and monthly amount of $708.94, billed quarterly at $2,126.96. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all papers signed by the saying aye, 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 so. Number eight, approval of 2016 Upper County Pool Policy Manual. Do I have a motion to approve? Been moved and seconded, all papers signed by the saying aye, 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 so. That's 9:15. Our next appointment is with the James W. Curry Advisory Board to question full-time employment of Judith Williams, Head Library.
9:45.
You were going to go.
He is totally.
I was going to say, he took the elder all the way, didn't he?
Lori, go over here, take this man away. Oh, Lordy.
We just need to make sure he gets the care.
We're usually glad.
We're trying to help him all that we can.
You guys were very nice.
It's 9:45.
9:45.
Let's rewind the tape.
9:45 is first.
How would you spell the person?
I don't know who the spokesperson is.
I will let you know that Michael Clint contacted us this morning, and he's the president of our advisory board, and he's unable to make it because he's out of town. So, Albert, if you'd like to as advice, you're more than welcome, I can cover the financial end, it's up to you, or I can speak on behalf of the advisory board.
I'm getting old, too. It's a little difficult to stand.
Yeah, this is, this is old age abuse here, of course, you guys are good.
God, boy.
Time to sit down, you figure, oh, well, Terry, we missed you at the last meeting.
Well, I didn't have backup, it almost happened again. I wouldn't feel real well, I apologize.
Well, Henry, we missed you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I attempted to call Mike yesterday evening and invited him to join us, my brother and I have come to town today, and never got a return call, so I assume that he lives out of town. I've been on that advisory board now for about three or four years, and it's been a couple of years since Judith first came on. And I think initially, we had a caretaker at the library, and I think that's exactly what, what the result was, with this arrival and taking the part-time employment at the library, we have a librarian, one that knows the science of library operation and so forth. And to me, and I think to the rest of the, the lord that's witnessed the evolution that's taken place since, since you came on board, it's absolutely astounding. It's not the same place, it's not the same place. And I can't speak for the rest of the county, I was born and raised at Alexander, Tank was three years younger than I, so he's not a reach. We were childhood terms and things. The thing that I'm impressed with, with Judith, is the outreach problem that she dealt with. I've spoken to two or four individuals over the last month, and there's an attitude, I don't know if it's pervasive through the rest of the county or the state or what, but there are individuals and families that just don't seem to give a damn whether their kids get educated or not. And I think Judith has done a lot, outreach, to get those persons and families interested in an education. And I always think back to my own grandmother, who said, "Son, if you don't get that education, you're going to end up digging ditches," you know? Well, here, a couple of years ago, because we live right near the railroad tracks, I'm out there cleaning the railroad ditch, one maintenance truck pulled up and said, "Mr. Let, you don't have to do that." And I said, "No," but my grandmother said, "If I didn't get an education, this is where I'd end up to look where the hell I'm at." So it's important, and I think Judith has done probably more than any other individual I'm familiar with, in so many of this county, to start bringing the importance of education and the use of the library to the citizens in that area. So I think I advocated, I think I may have made the original motion to bring her on full time, providing that we have the financial stability. And I'd certainly like to make that recommendation again to the leadership here. I think it's well worth it, I think she can improve the life of those children in any way, to any degree, it's a big plus for her. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have anything you want to say?
Just that I agree with my brother, that when we originally brought Judith on, we interviewed her in this room, and we were a little apprehensive because of her location, she lives in Audrey, and that's a long drive for a person like this. And to do it, summer, winter, anytime, and be there every day, it's a blessing for us, and she's really, she's really brought that library along with all of her activities. I think with a little more time available to her, if we made her full time, I think it would benefit everybody.
I believe her programming, what she's doing is bringing, she's working with the reading and things like that, but she's also working with general health, getting the kids to move, and just getting the actual families to the library. So it's family time, reading time, group activities and things like that, it's the whole package, and it's getting the library used more. From no longer than I've been there, I can see that month by month, she's always getting something new in there, and that gets more people back to the library.
And she does it the part and soul.
Yes, yes.
Having been in the school system most of my life, and having been raised up in that part of the country, realized all the problems that we've had with the school system, had with getting, that you know the county really interested in learning. It's amazing what she's done to get that started. To see those kids up there all of a sudden want to start getting interested in reading and education, no noise going on.
And I think we all think it'll just get better, continue to get better.
Absolutely.
Judith is truly carrying out the wishes of Mr. Curry and his will. If I can draw your attention to the pages 18, 19, and 20 of this week's agenda packet, you'll see the calendar for June and July, and then the you'll see the calendar for June and July, and then the summer reading program schedule for the summer. This is more activity, I would say, than the Curry Library has ever had, and this is all thanks to Judith and the support of the advisory board as well. I've provided you with some financial information here that we can review. Right now, Judith works 2,000, sorry, 1,508 hours a year, which is 29 hours a week. And you'll see, her total compensation, including all related taxes, is $23,515. We're proposing that Judith become a full-time employee at 40 hours of work, at 40 hours a week at the same wage rate, with all related benefits and taxes, that would be a total compensation of $44,154.48. Your FY 1516 budget decreased for this next year, for FY 1617, by $8,682. That buffer was there for a third employee that the library had used historically when there was a call-off or need for additional manpower at the library. We've eliminated that amount, so you'll see the difference, or the increase, that we're requesting for the full-time employment would be $12,737.48 a year, or roughly $1,000 a month. On the second, on the second page of your handout here, I'd like to draw your attention to the financials for FY 2009 through FY 2015. 2016 is incomplete because we're not to the end of the year, so I do not have all the income and expenditure figures for your review. But you'll see there that income and expenditures have varied. This is for the James W. Curry Library and Park combined. I did that for you, you do have two separate accounts, the library account and the park account, however, expenditures for the library sometimes come out of the park, and expenditures for the park sometimes come out of the library. So it provides you with a better overall sight if you see both of them combined there. I have the budget as the next attachment, and you'll see on the third page of the budget there, it lists the wage rates of the library staff. And the, the entire budget includes Upstate County Library and the Curry Library, however, the wages are specific to the Curry Library because you do not pay any wage payment to the Upstate County Library. I have a compensatory time agreement attached, Judith has agreed to sign a compensatory time agreement, if that is your wish. Darlene is available to cover when Judith is not at the library, if she did have to work overtime and takes comp time a little bit over time.
And Saturday.
Yes. And then, your last attachment here, one of the topics of discussion for really probably the last year has been a potential timber sale at the Curry Library and Park. And we have a gentleman, Nate Kennedy, who attends our meetings regularly, and he is a forester who has cruised the site, and he has given us an estimate of income if you were to approve a sale, and that's in the amount of $76,420. So that could be potential income that would be available in the fall of this coming year. Now, in discussion, the advisory board has agreed to set that money aside and earmark it for salaries, or for this potential increase in salaries. And, and speaking with Nate Kennedy, he recommends that the commission temper the Curry property every five years in different sections, so you can keep that forest managed.
Sounds like a good idea. He keeps a pretty close eye on.
Very.
Yes.
And he's going to re-cruise it before the sale happens. He's going to remark. He watches the market, and as things fluctuate, he's saying how the maple's the highest, and he's going to go back in and take some off of the table and add some to it. That's part of the deal.
When, when they timbered that, do they pay for, after they take it out, before they take it out?
I don't, I.
I think it's on the stuff, Terry.
Is there any on the stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
But I don't think we've ever really discussed it, probably what did it, he lets out bids for it.
One other item that I'd like to discuss, and I think it's important to note, we have all spoken with Judith Williams about the potential of a shortfall in finances with the trust because of the market and our lack of control over the investments. Judith is incomplete understanding that if in the future, whether it be a year, two years, or 10 years down the road, that the Curry Library and Park does not have the finances to support the full-time position, that she would go back to part-time for 29 hours a week.
Can that be as it's an amendment, or just to show that she doesn't agree with her department?
We'll have it in the official minutes. So I want you to understand that in no way will the advisory board or Judith Williams be coming to the commission and asking for additional compensation in the event that the library finances could not support the full-time position.
I will say this to the commission, in going up to the Curry Library Board, I would firmly believe that Judith has nothing but the library's goodwill and goodwill being at her.
That's, that's apparent from history, and I know that Patricia Tolliver, the former librarian at the county library, spoke very highly of you many, many times, in terms of your efforts. I've seen a difference from the time that I first was elected, when prior, prior to Terry's attendance at meetings, it's just an remarkable story.
She's definitely been an addition.
I know you all are aware that the funding for the library comes solely from the James W. Curry Trust, the public may not be aware, the commission does not provide any funding to the James W. Curry Library. They appoint the advisory board that manages the library and park, but they do not provide any type of financial contribution.
This is a pass-through that we reimburse the commission for the salary, you know, we compensate, the benefits will all be taken care of. With that being said, I would, Mr. President, I would move that we authorize permanent full-time employment for this library.
Would that be it, back until July 1st, beginning of the fiscal year?
Certainly. I very wish it so.
I certainly do not have any problem seconding that, because as the commissioner, I have seen an outstanding change in what you have brought forth to the library, and I know that James Curry was here, he would be proud of the progress that has been made up there, and of all the board's doing, and you leading up there, because you have done a fantastic job. I second that.
Been moved in second on favor, signature by the same eye. Eyes have it, so.
Can we say thank you?
Well, thank you. You guys have done a great job up there.
Thank you.
All right, call me, oh.
Rebecca?
Yep.
Okay, I have good news, and the good news, we got the Pill Program. Um, Pill Pro Foundation, the Golden Lord, the Liberty Foundation left off with Children's School Project, which is dedicated to providing new quality hardbound books for rural libraries. Well, we applied in the end of April, and, oops, that'll again, and found out that we did, there were 19 of us all together that got the Pill Program, and we were one of the libraries that got it. The deal with the Pill Program is that in order to increase awareness, public awareness, and get the community invested in the library and literacy, the Pill Pro Foundation requires that we provide one-third of the money to make that happen. So, and they manage it two-for-one, so we committed to raising $400, which is the maximum we were allowed to do, and that will give us $1,200 worth of books, which will equate to about 71 new hardbound books for the children's collection at Curry. Not a bad return on our investment. So, the other thing is, the Pill Pro Foundation requires that you tell them how you intend to raise this money. So I've come begging. The way we're raising the money is, we're, since we automated the library, we don't have any use for our book cards anymore, so we'll recycle one of those into notebooks, which you can purchase for a mere sum of $2. Or you can get your handy vanity embossed browsing bag, and come to the library, check out books in it for a mere $3. Do I have any takers? How many can I send you?
Wouldn't you, would this be an opportunity to take a photograph behind the commissioners, or give you emotional possibilities, is that permitted?
All right.
Yeah. Or maybe the president would spring for a H.I., and we'd make that picture of the library.
I'll write over a hundred dollars.
Well, give her, give her, have a picture of the president purchasing the first one.
Do I go up there?
Oh, that would all perfect.
Yeah, your president, he represents the commission.
Moving on now, uh, number nine, approval of E-911 Communication Center Director and Training Advertising. Applications must be received by closing business on Friday, June 17, 2016. Applicants must have at least three years of telecommunication experience, six months' experience as an E-911 supervisor, and meet the requirements set forth in the job description that is available upon request. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will, I will note that this was advertised internally, and we do have one applicant, but in order to get some, a larger amount of applicants at full front, we will be advertising publicly.
Okay, okay. So move.
Second.
Been moved in second on favor, signature by the same eye. Eyes have it, so. Item number 10, approval of correspondence from David H. Kaufman, Sheriff of Upstate County, accepting the resignation of Patty Clark, Law Enforcement Administrator Assistant, effective May 12, 2016. May may lead to executive session.
I will note that May 12 has been changed to Friday, May 13.
May 13, okay. Do I have a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
Been moved in second on favor, signature by the same eye. Eyes have it, so. Item number 11, approval of full-time Law Enforcement Administrator Assistant Advert Applications must be received by 4:00 p.m. on Monday, June 13, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
Been moved in second on favor, signature by the same eye. Eyes have it, so. Uh, to your information, items, item one, James W. Curry Public Library, June 2016 calendar. Item two, James W. Curry Library, July 2016 calendar. Item three, James W. Curry, on your mark, get set, read flyer. Item four, Upstate County Sheriff's Office, April 2016 mileage report. Item five, Upstate County Sheriff's Financial Statement, period ending March 2016. Item six, agendas and/or notices of meetings. Seven, meeting minutes, eight, meetings. Nine, appointments needed or upcoming, Upstate County Civil Service Board vacancy position. We have one table item, we'll leave that table for probably possibly next week, maybe. Our next regular meeting, and the Upstate County Commission, June 9, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. Upstate County Courthouse Annex. The commission meeting on Thursday, June 23, 2016, has been canceled. Terry, do I not, do I need to make an announcement on Friday evening's meeting?
There is an agenda that was set out, but you can't.
Uh, yeah, Friday, what is it, Friday? June 3rd, Friday, June 3rd, the commission will be meeting at 3:00 to meet with the judges on the remodeling and the work to be done to make room for our newest judge, elect Kirk Hall, and to accommodate him and his employees. And Friday, that'll be Friday at 3:00.
And you will meet over in the circuit courtroom.
You want to be here open first, and then we'll, okay. All right. Now, please, yes, yes. Sign away, 10:30 appointment, Steve Linkery, E-911 Director, discussing staff and operations of the E-911 Confiscation.
I've removed the other executive session for Western D.C.
Six dash nine, A dash four.
Precisely.
Been moved.
And if they see it moved, I'll go ahead and second it.
Been moved in second, on favor, signature by the same eye. Eyes have it, so.